I got a notification from Facebook that said we're live. And I see that we are indeed live. It is just about seven o'clock. We're gonna give one half a minute, then we'll get started. Do we have it, buddy?
It is not.
Yeah. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is seven o'clock for the Jeffersonville Common Council Meeting for May the 18th, 2020. It looks like we'll have, start with a roll call, please.
Councilperson White.
Present.
Councilperson Byrne.
Here.
Councilperson Harris.
Here.
Council Vice President Maples.
Here.
Councilperson Croft.
Here.
Councilperson Webb.
Here.
Council President Owen.
Here.
Council President Hawkins, I mean Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Let's correct reflect that we have seven council via phone and two present in mayor's conference room.
Alright, we did a string of meetings a couple of weeks ago, so we have three sets of minutes we need to approve. First, we have minutes for the proceedings of May the 4th, 2020. Is there a comment or question or motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Maples, second by Mr. Burns. Let's go.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne.
Aye.
Councilperson Harris.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Croft.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Motion passes unanimously. We have minutes from the special meeting on May the 6th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I believe that was a motion by Mr. Maples and a second by Mr. Burns again.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne.
Aye.
Council Vice Pres- oh, Councilperson Harris.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Croft.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Alright, and then finally, we have minutes from the special meeting on May the 8th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Maples, second by Mr. Croft.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne.
Aye.
Councilperson Harris.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Croft.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Alright, thank you all. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maples, second, Mr. Burns.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne.
Aye.
Councilperson Harris.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Croft.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Perfect. Alright, so claims to be approved. We have civil city claims in the amount of $670,932.67. Ms. Metcalf, was there anything additional?
No, there are no changes.
Motion to approve.
Aye, second.
There's a motion by Mr. Maples and a second by Mr. Burns to approve the civil city claims.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne.
Aye.
Councilperson Harris.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Croft.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Alright, and then we have parks claims in the amount of $152,771.51. Ms. Metcalf, any changes?
No, there are no changes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Maples, second by Mr. Croft.
Councilperson White.
Aye.
Councilperson Byrne.
Aye.
Councilperson Harris.
Aye.
Council Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Councilperson Croft.
Aye.
Councilperson Webb.
Aye.
Council President Owen.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Councilperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Alrighty, report of the clerk.
None at this time.
Okay, we don't have any unfinished business on the agenda for tonight. We'll go straight into new business. Mr. Harris has invited Pastor Jim Moon from Catalyst Rescue Mission to join us via Zoom today and give us an update on the activities at the shelter. Pastor Moon, welcome.
Hey gentlemen and ladies, it's good to be here. What I would like to do, I have a couple important pieces of information for tonight's meeting. The first is, we are currently in the process of taking down and removing the tents that are on the property. We heard on Thursday afternoon around 2:30 that the money from the city of Jeffersonville was finally signed off upon, and on Friday I made a meeting for today at 5:30, which I just got out of, for all of our intake staff to put in our new procedures on how we need to move people who are emergency shelter-seeking clients over to the red carpet inn. Currently, in the tents today, as of probably around 1:00, we had seven residents in the tents, and as of tomorrow, I know that they had four or five today that were, did intakes with us, so seven plus five, that's about how many people we have out there. We moved everybody inside that we could get inside, and tomorrow morning, out of those seven, there are some that are also gonna move inside. Tomorrow at 7:00 a.m., we will begin taking all the intakes, that was what the training was about today, all the intakes that come will be taken over to the red carpet. After I get in tomorrow, anybody that is not within a day or two of their staging period being over will actually be taken to the red carpet as well via bus. We have it set up for the tents to be taken down on Thursday. I think by Wednesday afternoon, I'll take off all the outside canopy, so you'll be able to see through the tents that there's nobody there. I just need to make sure that my processes that we've set up as of today at 5:30 are working, so that we can get people where they need to be and properly get them housed. Also, we still have not received the actual dollars from the FSSA, which is really from the Division of Mental Health and Administration and Addiction, excuse me, we haven't received those dollars in the bank. So the $10,000 will get us moving. I'll put my card on file at the red carpet tomorrow, and we'll start this process moving forward. One of the issues I need to make sure you're aware of, because I know there's neighborhood frustration with the tents, the tents have to be dry before they package them. They can't just pack them wet, so that could also, but the neighborhood will be able to see that there's no one in the tents. As soon as everyone's out, I'll take down the sides. But the companies told me Thursday looks like a day. I haven't looked at the weather. I've been here all day. I haven't looked at the weather to see what that's gonna look like, but they're gonna need 24 hours of dry time to be able to take them down and package them appropriately, so that they don't mold.
Jim, I had a question for you. There had been some talk about a lot of people walking around that area, around Clayesburg in general and Catalyst Rescue Mission. Can you share anything about that?
Yeah, we are still serving food for the neighborhood and the walk-up clients that come to the building. There are people that, our normal intakes, we would average about seven a day. We're averaging about four a day right now. What I've found is that most homeless people don't want to shelter in place either. They don't wanna not be able to go to Thornton's and get a Polar Pop or whatever, but people still don't have the food resources that they need. Now, they hand out food from the community kitchen at noon, but at breakfast and dinner, a lot of the residents from the streets and/or from the apartments adjacent to us or from Clayesburg will come and get food, and we're handing that out. They've been telling me we're somewhere between 20 and 35 meals a day we hand out to people in the community. They have to, we know most of their names by now, but they have to tell us their name. We entered into our iPad, we have a kiosk on the inside that normally, if a client, when it wasn't COVID-19, they'd come in, they would type their name in the kiosk, that would then send a message saying that the kitchen needs to provide food for them, and they'd come up and bring it. We've also been allowing some of the folks who are on the streets, we had a guy the other day, he came up and he had soiled himself. He's an elderly man, and he needed to change his clothes in a shower. We did allow him to use the shower trailer, because that's something we can disinfect completely. We gave him new clothes, we showered, he took a shower, and then he was on his way. I tried to get him off the street. He doesn't wanna be off the street. But we're passing out about, you know, like I said, 20 to 35 meals a day to people that are walk-up clients, and I would say 50/50. There are about 50% are street homeless that don't wanna be sheltered, and about 50% are residents of the Clayesburg neighborhood from Clayesburg or from the actual place across the street. The other people that are walking, there may be, like, we have some people here, we have eight people that are working, which means that they will walk to the bus stop or go to work. We bring some of them to work. There's people that are walking to their therapist appointments, and there's people that are walking to their doctor's appointment, but there's no one walking for, let me go to Thornton's, or let me, there's, we cut, that's the sheltering in place. No one can leave for any other reason but psychiatric treatment and doctor's appointments, or because they have a job. But there's also people walking around the neighborhood, and I think I made this clear, is I think probably out of Clayesburg and the adjacent apartments, I would say that less than 50% have their own transportation. So there's people walking this neighborhood on a daily basis for all kinds of reasons. Not all of them are homeless, but they, we are living in a, you know, Clayesburg, we are here in a neighborhood where not everybody has transportation, and that's gonna continue to be the fact, even when COVID-19 is over. Thank you.
I have a question for you. I just wanna make sure I understood something that you said. You guys are sheltering in place, and so if they were already in your facility, other than the reasons that you listed, they are to remain in your facility. Is that what I understood you to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and is that where, have you had people decide that they don't wanna be a part of this anymore and leave?
I've had to throw some people out, yeah. And I'll tell you this, is that if, we told them initially that if they couldn't buy into sheltering in place for eight weeks, that they couldn't stay here, because of some people, because of their mental capacities, they just, I mean, it's beyond their scope of what they can do. And so there is probably an increase in the street homeless population, because some of the people just don't wanna do that. But the other thing is, I have allowed, on a case-by-case basis, if, I know one particular client, I got a call from Life Springs, and they're saying, I know that this particular guy, he's left, but I need you to keep him there, because if I could get him in and get him his shot that he needs, he'll be mood stabilized, and he'll be easier for us to treat and work with us. And when another organization, that was Life Springs in that instance, calls me and says, I need you to do this, that I take that as, it overrides some of our rules that we have, but we brought that gentleman into the tent, even though he'd left on another occasion because of his mental illness. He just is not treated right now. But as of today, he did get some of the treatment that he needs. He didn't get everything. He's going back tomorrow, but we did kinda waive that rule, I guess, so to speak, of not letting him back in, because a neighboring organization or one of our partners said, can you please keep him for me?
And what, since this has all began, and I don't know how you wanna put a date on that, maybe since the tents have went up, maybe this happened to the number of people, has there been a precipitous increase or decrease since that time?
We went way down, yeah. Our census is way down, which is good, actually. The first thing that we did, whenever we, on March 13th, we received a letter from the Indiana State Department of Health that classified homeless individuals as most vulnerable to the virus, and so we got together with Dr. Yezel and Dr. Bonnacum. It was that day that we received it, and we began to put a plan in place, which is kind of what you see today. But we, at that moment, I think we had 118 in the house, and we, and that included all of our overnight guests, which are seeking emergency housing, and we moved several different directions, but we sent more than 18 people on buses to various locations. We said, hey, we had a neighbor, we had a meeting in the house, we said, if you can get to family and you can be with family, this is the time for them to step up for you. So we sent people on buses all around the state of Indiana. We actually sent one guy all the way to Alabama with this family. But then we started thinking about how that the emergency housing guests that come overnight, we don't know where they come from or where they're going, and so that was the, you know, we don't, we wanted to shelter the people that are our program participants in place. So as of March 13th, that's when we put the tents up and began moving forward with keeping the two populations separate. I think it was a week to two weeks later, after March 13th, that we actually decided, because COVID-19, we heard the stuff that was happening in New York, and that really, I mean, I just wanna tell you right now, that freaked us out because of what was happening in the homeless shelters in New York, but we told the people in the tents that they had the shelter in place shortly after the tents were up. I'm gonna say a week to two weeks. My initial thought was, when we put the tents up, is that we would just allow it to be like the emergency shelter, like we have in the basement here, or in the facility on a normal basis. They come in at, check in at 5:00, and they're out at 9:00 a.m. But when I realized the severity of the situation and how it was progressing, we made the decision to have them shelter in place, and then right shortly after that, we started doing medical checks of everybody in the building and in the tent on a regular basis, and then assessing for symptoms, and we shared that Google document with Dr. Bonnacum and Dr. Yezel, and they make the decision if someone needs to be in quarantine or not, because we're not, I'm not medically trained. I can tell you where this stuff is going on, but I'm not medically trained enough to find out, you know, does this person need to be in quarantine or need to be somewhere else.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
You answered my question on the tents. It sounds like they're gonna be gone by this weekend. By moving them into the hotel, have you noticed where, I mean, is the word on the street where it's, hey, let's come over here, we got a little bit easier. Have you heard anything like that? And also, too, is there a way, I mean, has there any of your, I don't wanna say clients, but is there a way to test them for COVID? Have any of them tested positive?
Yeah, right now, we have no, we've actually had, I think, 16 tests as of the date, and we haven't ordered all those, but as people come in, we ask them if they have been tested. Everybody here has been negative, and starting with the people that are moving into the hotel tomorrow, everybody in that hotel through Life Springs is gonna be brought over to Sharon Drive and tested. Dr. Yezel's got it okay for them to get an immediate test, but we've actually seen, the first part of your question, we've seen a decrease, repeat the first part of your question, just flipped my mind.
Have you seen, is the word on the streets where, hey, let's come on, Jeff, you're putting us in a hotel?
Not yet. We don't, we don't, but I think about, as of this weekend, and I talked, I addressed that with everybody here in the facility today, the intake specials, I said that, you know, basically, they needed to be doing a thorough conversation with the folks coming through, because I think as of probably this coming weekend, whenever the word gets on the street that we're sheltering people in a hotel, we're gonna have droves of people entering. It'll move from four intakes a day, maybe, to, I would say, back at least to our seven and eight a day, and that's where I started getting nervous, because the dollar amounts grow rather quickly. If you're working with somebody who, if you have a $65 a day charge, and you have seven days a week, and you have eight intakes, the numbers add up to around over $50,000 in one month of hotel fees. And the initial conversation that I had, and what we set up with the grant, was that we would house only COVID-positive folks, and the way the grant was structured initially was that we were going to, the first, actually, the first way we set up the grant was, we're gonna quarantine people in a tent. Because of the neighborhood distress, we moved that to housing the COVID-positive people in the hotel, and we put, we refigured the grant to include about $50,000 worth of money to house those folks in the quarantine period, but now we're moving, you know, the normal street homeless into the hotel or motel, which is gonna probably move the number into the $150,000 range of how much it's gonna cost us to actually house people through this time period, and I think that's something that's important to note. It's gonna be, and that's just the conservative estimates. I think that we'll see as things move along. I mean, what makes me concerned about, there's two concerns I have. The one concern is, I don't know the number. I don't know how many people we're gonna see, and so we're saying the total number of people that we're gonna see, that we're gonna put them in a hotel or motel, and so I'm a very detail-oriented person, and so I wanna make sure I have enough money, and right now, I don't even have enough money, because I don't have the other dollars in the bank. That's the first problem. The second problem is, I'm really concerned, and I hope that it doesn't, and I've been praying diligently for a vaccine, and I hope it doesn't happen, but in the fall, I'm really worried about what this hap, what happens to us in the fall, if this happens again, and we set the precedent that we're gonna put people in hotels and motels, and we don't have funding for that sort of thing. Now, the people from FSSA have said that if this comes back, another stimulus thing could be signed into law, so, you know, I'm always, it's all speculation, but with the tents, I was trying to do what I considered the most cost-effective way, and the most humane way at the time with the money that I had, to treat people with dignity, because the other option for us was to leave them on the street and not house them at all. There was, that we did, we did kick that around, of whether we should just not accept anybody who are street homeless. You gotta know that they always already live in tents, and the tent that we put up here is cooled and heated. It's better than what our military puts up for the military people that are serving our country on a daily basis. And so I did the best job I could with the money that I had, and I really am sorry that there was neighborhood anxiousness against it. That is not my intent. My intent was to respond to the circumstance and the actual medical pandemic that was in front of me at the time, and, you know, I wish for you to know this, but the folks that are in here, I know their names and faces, and I know their stories, and I know that there's nine elderly women that I've been desperately trying to get into nursing homes that we still have, we still have worked with because of COVID-19 shutting their situation down, and I really don't wanna have them dying on my record. And we have three men who are up in age, who I'm desperately trying to keep them from getting sick, because I know those folks, because of their medical histories, will be the ones that need ventilators and likely be at risk of perishing due to the virus, and I'm trying to do everything I can to keep it out of here, and so I apologize, actually, to anybody that I've offended because of the tents. It's not something that was meant to, it was just an immediate response to a really great fear that I felt and embraced of keeping COVID-19 out of this building.
Another question, Jim. Just for curiosity, of the percentage of people you got there, how many have jobs that work in Jeff? Just, I was just wondering, I mean, and how long do they stay?
All of them.
They all work in Jeff?
Ninety-nine percent of the people work for us, work in Jeff. We have a good, we have a good working relationship with two different temp agencies that put people in all of the River Ridge places out there. Before this COVID-19 hit, we had 60% of the people in this building worked, and so they were on track, and a lot of them are unemployment right now, but one of the things that, here's a good, a good, a helpful thing. From January 1st to March 13th, we got 28 people into permanent housing. That's the first thing. As of March 13th, we still had 118 people in here, but we had, I mean, I think there's 11 of them that are on the housing list for Jeffersonville Housing or New Albany Housing, but they closed like that. I got 11 people on the list with lifespan to try to get them into nursing homes, but that list closed like that. I have people that were working and saving their money and banking those dollars to pay their first month's rent and deposits, but a lot of the people accepting applications closed like that, and if you don't have a current active job, you can't get in there. Unemployment's not gonna cut it. So as soon as March 13th hit, it wiped us out of the opportunities to get people into permanent housing. Now, today, actually, except for sending them to be with family, because we had one person exit over the weekend to be with their family, but as of today, Jeffersonville Housing is starting to open back up. We got two, a family of two, I think, that are pretty close to getting their keys, but I'm doing the best job that I can with what's handed to me. I appreciate everything that Jeffersonville's done. New Albany's working on some funding here, because right now, I've spent a lot of money that probably has been projected out for, you know, June and July for actual, but I'm using it in March and April and May because of the COVID-19 response and not being able to get reimbursed back, you know, for those dollars.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jim, Donnie Rock.
Yes, sir.
What is your population at this time?
I didn't hear you, sir.
What is the population of the mission at this time?
Seventy-two. Seventy-two, as of, see, we do our census every day at 9:00 p.m., so when you're in the bed at 9:00 p.m., you're counted on the census. So as of, this is yesterday's census, so we're not at 9:00 p.m. yet, but as of yesterday, it was 72, and at 9:00 p.m. tonight, I know we've had five or six intakes today, so we've had, we've had only one person leave, and that was, and that's the other thing that you get into. We had people housed in the tent, and today was their day to move in, but they don't wanna move inside the building, so I said, you gotta go. But one person did leave and was discharged, and we had five new people come in, so tomorrow, we're talking about probably being in the neighborhood of 76 total people.
What is your capacity?
We have 128 actual beds in the building, and then we have, under normal emergency shelter status, we will use cots, and we can put in right about 175 with emergency cots, and that's what's out in the tents right now, is the emergency cots. We normally would have inside or outside.
Does anybody have anything else for Pastor Moon? Jim, thank you for the update. We appreciate you coming and just giving everybody an overview.
Yeah, and if anybody needs me, most of you have my cell phone number. If you need a question or ask anything, I'm always available to answer any questions at any time, and thank you for the partnership and the good work that you all do. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Jim. That's all that we had on the agenda for new business, I'll go on to Mr. Wilder for an attorney comment.
Quickly, I just want to read, as, and I said this, I started down this road with this very unique circumstance and time, that it's ongoing belief that because of the exigent circumstances in being COVID virus, that we are dealing, that everything will do, whether or not, there are certain statutory rules that apply in time, so long as they are, decisions are grounded in this, providing for the health, safety, and well-being of the community to continue the services to the taxpayers, we are on foot.
All righty. Department heads, I don't think we have anybody on other than Ms. Metcalf, do you have anything, Heather?
No, I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to council comments, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that it was nice to see the downtown businesses alive and people practicing social distancing. The downtown businesses have taken the precautions necessary and ordered by the Health Department to make sure that people remain safe, and it's good to see people back patronizing local businesses. To follow up on the agreement that was reached with the Health Department, once those folks are tested, those tests are to come back in forty-eight to seventy-two hours, depending on when they were tested, and if they are negative, then they are not to stay in the hotel, they're to go to the shelter or wherever they choose. So it's not that we're, that they would be housed, testing negative and then be housed indefinitely. Only those who would test positive would then be quarantined and cared for. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Burns?
My only question, Mr. Rowan, you have an update, you'll give a little later here about the Jeff sustainments at all?
Yeah, I can pull that up in just a minute.
Okay, I had an update from Friday, but I thought you might have a little more for me.
I'm sorry?
I said I've gotten some information from Friday, but I thought you might have a little more for me to end up there for the timeline.
Right, I just have the Friday numbers.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Paris?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Pastor Moon for being here tonight, and appreciate the good job he's doing, that's it.
Okay, Mr. Maples?
No comment.
Okay, Mr. Croft?
I concur with Mr. Paris, I'm just, thank Pastor Moon for the updating very formally. You know, I know a lot now, more now I did, that's a good thing, that's all I got.
Okay, Mr. Webb?
No comment.
Mr. Hawkins?
I'd like to thank Pastor Moon for coming in for the update, and then also, Councilman Burns was cutting in and out, I believe he had the same thing I was going to ask you, which was, do we have any updates, new information about Jeff sustainments, like the applicant numbers and things like that? I think that may have been what he asked, but I couldn't make it out, and then that's it.
Yes, that is what he asked, and I've got some numbers from last week that I can share. Mr. Ellis, did you have anything?
No comment.
Okay. To answer about the Jeff sustainance numbers, there were, as of last week, twenty-five requests for share filings, twenty-four percent, there was one who applied that didn't fit the program, so they were not included. They had nine applications as of Thursday, and then there were, the deadline was five PM today to apply. I've talked to a couple of businesses since Thursday, I know that they've gotten some more applications in. Mr. Burns, did you have a more recent number?
The information I received, they had right at thirty applications on Friday, about five-thirty, that had been turned in. I was encouraged, Lisa Brooking had or was in the process of meeting with about four applicants that were having difficulty, so she was helping people with paper applications, and they delivered a few paper applications as well, so.
Yeah, I did have, I did have a couple of people who reached out for paper applications that I think the WNSI team made sure that those were accommodated, and everything seems to be rolling smoothly so far. I don't have anything else, I appreciate Pastor Moon being with us tonight, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion, Mr. Maples, second by Mr. Burns, thank you all, have a good night.
Good night, you guys. Good night, Bruce.
Have a safe evening.
No, I haven't signed anything, but this is.
That helps. I think he always ran everything together and gapping stuff, so everything.